Good evening. I'm going to my script, pardon me. In compliance with Chapter 551, Open Meetings of the Texas Government Code, I call to order a regular voting meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Austin Independent School District for Thursday, May 22, 2025, at 6:02 PM. A quorum of the Board is physically present at Austin ISD headquarters to conduct this meeting. This meeting is being broadcast on cable channel 22 through Spectrum Estown Broadband and on channel 99 through AT&amp;T U-verse. Closed captioning in English is available on these platforms for individuals who are deaf or hard of hearing. Welcome and thank you for joining us. First on the agenda tonight are the committee reports. We have posted the written committee reports as an attachment to this item on our Board Doc's agenda. This includes a committee report on the Board Policy Committee and the Austin Education Fund. The next item is our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Boswell. As part of the superintendent's report tonight, I will be presenting updates related to school consolidation work, fund balance work, which is directly tied to our budget, as well as school improvement and accountability. And so Joshua Jun here will be pulling up a presentation so that we can share with our community. So the one thing we want to be very, very clear with our community about and our staff is that we have been working through and having difficult conversations regarding our budget. And as we know, everything within our budget came about because there's a purpose, a need, something that had to be addressed over the last many years. And so as we move forward and begin to look towards adoption of the 2526 budget, I think it's really, really important to communicate that we are at a point where we are projecting to start the 2526 fiscal year with a budget less than 20% tied to our fund balance. And we'll talk about what that means in a moment, once the presentation gets up. It's important to show the kind of graphics. All right, apologies, everybody. We'll get it up before too long. I'm happy to restart as well. All right. I'm going to just go ahead and rewind just a moment or two. So I think it's really important that we talk about the various elements of our budget and make it very, very clear whenever there is something being considered that has an impact regarding our ability to do different things. And for the better part of the last three or four years, we've had lots of conversations around fund balance and the importance of fund balance. And as an organization, we are committed to ensuring that we have a healthy fund balance to really pay for unforeseen conditions, which we know do occur. You just think back to the pandemic or Winter Storm Uri when we had to leverage dollars within the fund balance, or to help manage cash as we make payroll. One of the things that a lot of folks may not know is that we do rely on these funds to ensure that we can make payroll every single month. And so I think it's really, really important, as we move to the next slide, to communicate that we are projecting to end the 2425 fiscal year, which is this year that we're in, with a 16.4% fund balance, which is less than board policy. One of the things that is important to note is that over the course of the year, and we'll have a conversation around this with Ms. Katrina Montgomery, our CFO, is that we've done a lot, but we continue to see additional costs that have to be managed. And as important as this number is to protect, we are acknowledging that we are dipping below the 20% board-approved policy of for our fund balance. Now, as we move to the next slide, this graphic is one we've shared a couple times, but I think it really helps communicate the importance of our fund balance and how we use it. Looking at the graphic, which you'll see on the left hand, on the left column, sorry, on the X-axis are the months of the year, and on the Y-axis, you'll see the balance or dollars and millions. And so what you'll see in red are the cash that we are the accounts payable that we have over the course of the year. And what you'll notice is that early in the fiscal year, July, August, September, we have lots of really large expenditures that hit our budget. You can see there, we make our recapture payment, property insurance, and then you see it begins to level out over the course of the year. Now, we don't have those funds yet from the Travis County Appraisal District. Those come in much later. And so the inflow of cash is shown in the bar chart as blue. And so you can see we have funds coming in, but we really don't see the majority of it till November and December. And you see that big increase in January of 2024, where 50% of our tax collections have been completed. So you can see there's money going out at the beginning of the year, and then slowly about mid-year, we begin to see earnings from tax revenue be collected. So the black line represents our cash at any point along the fiscal year. And again, this is the 2023, but this trend line, these relative cash flows are the same for any year. So we start in the beginning of the year with a healthy fund balance, which you can see there with the black triangle. And then we draw down our cash because our expenses exceed the revenue that has come in for that month, and it draws down, 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 down. And then we recover back up around November, and then we stabilize towards the end of the fiscal year. The one thing I want our community to see in our families and staff and certainly our board, and we've seen this before, is how close it gets in November, December. In 2023, we had about $53 million on hand, and you can see that is razor-thin for us. It is something that we have to manage. I know Ms. Katrina Montgomery and I spend a lot of time talking about making sure we have enough cash on hand so that we don't have to extend to get a line of credit or to rely on anything other than our cash to make payroll. And so it is really, really important that we maintain a healthy fund balance. There are other implications regarding, you know, our ability to maintain AAA bond ratings, having the ability to access low interest rates. So there are lots of things, but from a cash flow perspective, maintaining a healthy balance is critically important. And so this is significant, as we move to the next slide, which is why we're going to be introducing a policy to our board to be approved in June that speaks to how we stabilize and restore fund balance if, in the event that we have to go below the 20%. That'll be brought forward for approval in June. It is going through our process right now with the Policy Subcommittee. The one thing that I also want to be very clear about is that reducing our annual expenditures is and will continue to be a priority of this administration. We've certainly have done a lot of work, but in an extreme effort to make sure that we have detail and clarity and are budgeting honestly regarding our expenditures, we just know that there's more work to be done. And also acknowledge that, you know, things are different now than they were five or six years ago. When you look back, you know, just two or three years ago, or even five years ago, property growth in the city of Austin was, you know, increasing at a very, very high rate. You know, we were budgeting seven or eight percent, and it was coming back at 11%. And so that had a positive impact on our budget. And what we saw this last year, which will be true for this coming year, is that we cannot rely on that type of extreme property growth to save us whenever we do have these budget shortcomings. And so we absolutely have to get to a place where we have a balanced budget and can restore our fund balance. And so there are going to be difficult decisions that we'll have to make. We've been certainly making them over the last 18 months, but they're going to continue, including school consolidations, which we've talked about, staffing both at Central and elsewhere, obviously always wanting to protect the classroom, but recognizing that the sheer amount that has to be reduced is making that more and more difficult. Then also looking at programming. You know, there are lots of programs that have a purpose in Austin ISD, but all of that has to be evaluated and ultimately reduced if we're going to become an organization that is stable and able to provide the highest quality education, which I know that we can. And so I'm going to transition into the next part of the presentation, which is around school consolidations. We are committed to providing updates as we move through the process. The roadmap is one that we've shared before. It was shared previously in a similar update that I gave to the Board, as well as in a video that was posted online when we were not quite able to have our work session. Again, this is a higher-level roadmap, just communicating what this effort will look like as we move through the remainder of the calendar year, ultimately targeting a decision by the Board or Board vote in November. I've said a couple different times that the reason that we need to do this in November is really to ensure that our families and staff have enough time to transition in the fall semester, in the spring semester, to start the next school year. The other thing that we need to be very mindful of is that the enrollment platform, the choices that students have, all of that has to be built into our systems and deployed. So having those decisions and those votes take place in November is critically important. One of the asks that the administration had of the Board was to provide input on values and priorities as well as goals. And we have received some of that from our trustees. I think there's a little bit more coming in, but wanted to share with our community some of the things that we've received thus far. And I think it's worth kind of, you know, stating these. Acknowledge history and ensure burden of consolidations is spread as equitable as possible. Ensure decisions support long-term efficiencies and realistic cost savings, something that we talk about often as an administration. We want to consider programming. How can we maintain and even improve what is offered? You know, if you look around AIST, you'll see lots of really kind of funky boundaries, but also misalignments in feeder patterns, not only between elementary and middle, but middle and high. And so considering that as part of the process is something that we've heard from the trustees. Be empathetic and thorough in our transition planning for staff and families. Avoid a TA takeover or an installation of board managers and align feeder patterns and vertical teams. And some of the goals, this should be a comprehensive, transparent system approach that does not bow to privilege. Certainly recognize that in years past, there's been lots of different things pulling on both the staff and the Board. And so having a process that protects that from occurring, acknowledging this will be disruptive, but we can do hard things, and we can do them together if we have the proper support. Be future-focused and acknowledge the past and work together for a better, stronger Austin ISD. So I think all very appropriate and certainly will be used to help inform the work. When we think about the structure itself and the process that we're going to go through, I want to be really clear that there is going to be one tool, but there are different parts of that tool. There'll be one that's associated with the data inputs, the analytics. The rubric will ultimately yield a list of all schools, and from that list will identify, you know, which schools may lend themselves to a consolidation. But we have to consider the contextual context of the local environment. Programming exists, the impact, the transportation challenges that we may have if we, you know, explore a consolidation at that school, staff movement. There are so many other things that we have to really think through and plan for before we can actually get to a final recommendation. Our hope is that when we do have that recommendation, it is one that can be received as a recommendation. But just wanted to communicate to our families and staff that there are multiple things that are considered. Some will be done earlier on, but a lot of it will occur a little bit later as we get through the intentional work. And it's also important to note that a lot of this work is going to occur in the summer, where we have some time to actually do the work. Our goal is to engage, get feedback now before school lets out. But as we get into the analysis, just having the space to do that's critically important. One of the things that you probably saw on the roadmap was a principal working group. It's a commitment of ours. You know, it's important that we have principal voice as part of this process. They are tremendous leaders and understand the challenge that we have ahead of us, but also recognize that something has to be done, just given the challenges we have around our budget. So some of the things that I want to share with the Board is that they are starting to meet. They will meet starting on June 9, and that'll continue on through the fall semester. They'll provide feedback on values and priorities. And I also want to be really, really clear that principals' participation in this won't have an impact on which schools are considered or not considered. We've had lots of conversations. Principals are tremendous, and I think really just want to make sure that the process is as good as it can be. So we're very appreciative of that input. We've had some initial feedback that I think is worth sharing with our community and with our Board. Concerns about letting loud voices guide decision-making. I think we've experienced that in the past and just acknowledging that upfront and making sure that we're mindful of it. And ensuring that deadlines for feedback are held true. And that's really an obligation of the administration and the commitment that we're going to do it. Like any large initiative, there needs to be a thoughtful communication engagement strategy, and we'll certainly have that. It's being built out. Many elements are already underway. A couple of things that I want to point out to our community is that we do have a consolidations webpage that'll be, that is available. All the information, all the milestones, all the data we collect, and as the work progresses, will be posted here. We are also in the process of collecting surveys, survey information from our community, our entire community. And I want to recognize that, you know, there are lots of surveys that go out in Austin ISD, and there's always ways to improve them. And sometimes they can be long, sometimes they can be wordy. There's just a lot that goes into just how they come about. But I do want to encourage our families to take the time and respond if they can. They're due June 6. We will have opportunities for open survey feedback at a later date, but this feedback really will help inform the first steps of this process. We have some dates here for future engagements, just in the near future, and also just want to be really transparent with our Board about some of the supports that are going to be needed to actually be successful. When we engage here in Austin ISD, we have to do it in a very thoughtful way, which means that we'll need some support around meeting facilitation. Translation interpretation is something that we value here in Austin ISD, and when we have this type of initiative or project, we want to make sure that we provide those supports. And right now, we know that we can't do it without additional support coming into the work. We are gonna, we have already engaged with a demographer, which is critically important for this. And then also acknowledge that we're going to have to make adjustments into our system for how we support enrollment. And then lastly, overall strategy, right? This is something that we will need support on, want to make it just transparent to our Board that these are things that have to get done. It is a big lift, and we'll acquire a little bit more support. Some of the upcoming deliverables include finalization of the data collection, tool usability and testing. We'll continue to get board feedback as early as the 12th, which is in a couple weeks. And we're going to continue on with the work. Happy to answer any questions about this, be it board update or through one-on-ones, but just wanted to communicate to our community where we were. We weren't able to quite have the same dialogue because of the minutes that we didn't have available to us last time, so really wanted to create a little bit of space to provide an update. So as we move on to the last section of the superintendent's update, want to provide an update regarding school improvement. As an organization, it's important that we do things our way and leverage the real assets that our communities are and acknowledge that our school communities are going to know so much and be able to inform our responses to the improvement work in a way that no one else can. But we need to be able to be able to manage it. And so what this slide here communicates is an approach that the administration's going to take. We are looking at having all of our schools be supported locally by a CAC+. And the reason I say CAC+ is because, you know, CACs are existing groups at each of our campuses that really are leveraged to help support various efforts, and they're very localized. But we also acknowledge that much more needs to be brought in, you know, many more voices, community inputs and thoughts, and partners to really get a thoughtful plan developed and ultimately implemented. And so you can see here in the top right-hand corner, some of those different groups that we are going to be asking to get involved at the local level. The other thing that I want to share with our trustees is that it's really important that we also have a district-level committee that is comprised of different individuals that are in these specific schools. It's really, really important that there's the opportunity for idea sharing. There are things that we may be able to introduce at a district level that we wouldn't know unless we got those inputs. And so it's just a really great way for us to manage, well, actually, to support these schools and also protect them, because what we know is that there's a very loving, giving community in Austin, and a lot of times, if it's all directed locally, campus by campus, it can be overwhelming. And so this structure allows us to receive that, organize it, make sure that we're aligned, and then deploy the resources appropriately. And so I do want to thank Trustee Gonzalez for working with us to kind of get this to where it needed to be. It allows us to be successful in how we support our schools, but also not duplicate efforts. So I think it's a very good approach as we move forward. Speaking specifically to the turnaround plans, I wanted to provide a brief update regarding some of the milestones that have been hit, specifically around engagement. You can see here on this table the different milestones that are required as part of the turnaround work, but also some of the others that have been added, because we know that we just, you know, there's more information to be collected. You can see the different engagements that have taken place. The one that I want to call out is the third column from the right, well, actually, the third and fourth. The fourth one is the feedback survey, when it'll close, which is May 30. We want to just continue to promote that, get feedback, and then want to also communicate that we are going to have these plans in draft form available to our school communities to review, to provide feedback to us. We're going to be working with our partners locally to facilitate those conversations. And so all of that will occur over the week of the 26, and we'll bring those back with that input for final drafts shortly thereafter. We are still targeting June 12 for approval. And what I'll say is, you know, the feedback has been really useful. You can see on the next slide some of the principal coffees, how those have kind of worked over the last several days. This is an example of Dobie Middle School. Dr. Amerson has been working with the principals and with the team to make sure that we have lots of opportunities for our community to engage with us. As we move forward, some upcoming opportunities for engagement, principal coffees will continue, office hours, which will be at the campus. We'll get feedback from our communities over the course of the week of the 26. And then really looking to just be hyper-transparent and share with our community at every step along the way. We will have a website launched for this work. It'll be launched on the 23rd, which is tomorrow, so that when anybody wants to kind of see where we are, they can be referred to that, see all the documentation, all the resources that have been deployed, and also kind of any summaries of meetings, so everybody can understand where we are as we move through this process together. And so with that, I'll complete my superintendent update and move on to the next agenda item.
Thank you for this. Trustees, do you have any questions or clarifications? And I want to make clear before we get started, under our Lone Star Governance Minutes, to stay at 50% for this meeting, we have a total of 1 hour and 57 minutes we can use for non-legally required items. So we're at 23 and 1/2 minutes right now. Just wanted to share that. Thank you. Any questions or comments? These are important topics, and we have the time.
I'm going to say very briefly. You know, when we're looking at school consolidations, we're going to see this budget coming and this budget presentation. And this is, and this is why this has to happen. Like, when I think about my kid's school and what they get at that school, I want all kids in Austin to have libraries, to have access to the fine arts, to have these amazing programs, and to maintain that quality of education. When, you know, I see like creating a tool and putting schools in and spitting them out, we, our community wants great things for our kids, and they are very thoughtful. They can understand the budgetary process we're in, and we need to get people in the same room, because this is not going to go well if it, you know, I see, you know, this line at the bottom that says engagement opportunities. We have been a part of some really unpleasant engagement opportunities where the community is hearing stuff that this is going to happen right now on this tight-time lane. We have a runway for this so that we can do this better, and we have to do this better. This isn't, I mean, this is like blending families, and it, we can do it really well and be really strong. Or if we just put this on a list and you hear your kid is going to a school that you've never even seen, that's not going to feel good with people you don't know. And our parents do, and families do really well when they come together and get to meet each other. So I want to, I hope to see some more specificity of how that will happen, especially with our parents who are, or families who are currently being served, and our families of young children who might not even know what they want for their students, but they're shopping around. They know they go to their neighborhood school, and they say, oh, we don't do tours. But they do tours at my kid's school, so we have a ton of transfers coming in. I've been to the school in their neighborhood, and I know it's fantastic, but they didn't get to go. So being really, really thoughtful about how that gets done, could we could make our schools a lot stronger, or we could really destroy our communities and the assets that we have.
Thank you, Trustee Dieter Riosi.
So I just wanted to key into the communication and transparency part. And, you know, being a new trustee, even considering my lack of experience on the Board, this does not seem like a typical situation, or an annual situation, or even a regular decade situation. I would like to see a, you know, coherent effort on some consistent messaging and communication. I would like to see a, you know, coherent effort on some consistent messaging and communication strategy beyond what we normally do, because this is such a unique situation, and the timeline that we have up, I think, was very helpful, you know, going through November. I would like to see some sort of specific messaging besides just the normal outreach, but so that we can keep the public in the community updated and engaged, you know, throughout this process, because it can be, you know, several months long, but it's also, you know, still gonna happen pretty quickly in retrospect. So I would appreciate that, you know, in the next meeting or two, to have some coherent plan on how we're gonna keep everybody updated.
Yeah, and to trustee Willicue and trustee DiRiosi's comment, you know, we hear you, which is why on slide 12, I wanted to communicate some of the additional resources we're gonna need to accomplish those tasks and that level of engagement. This is a once-in-a-blue-moon situation, but we're also familiar with doing large initiatives. You know, we, bonds, tax rate elections, you know, that's the kind of scale that we're talking about here. Maybe not quite there, but pretty close. I mean, it is a big lift. And so that is what I expect, and that's what we'll deliver as far as communication and engagement plan. But I want to be really honest, like, it's gonna require some additional resources to be able to pull it off, as, because it's so infrequent, we're not built necessarily to do it that way without some additional support. So I hear you, and we will be responsive.
Yeah, thank you. Let us know what we can do to help.
Absolutely.
Trustee Kaufman.
In particular, around the school improvement plans, I would just ask, excuse me, in regards to the school improvement plans, particularly around Dobie, Webb, and Burnett, I would just note that we receive a lot of public commentary on those plans, both from, you know, people who are looking at the big picture around the impacts, and also some very heartfelt pieces pertaining to individual situations and impact on students or staff. So I would just, you know, in the spirit of transparency and in the spirit of the board kind of staying in our lane in terms of policy and values and honoring the administration's role in the operations and the implementation, I would just ask that you, to the extent possible, share with us the responses that are going to the families and the students and the staff who are emailing us, because we get the emails, they're really meant to be answered by staff, because they're pertaining to operational issues around it. And I would just like to have that kind of reassurance that those people are getting answers and to know what those answers are, so that we can be, you know, kind of do our job of the oversight. So I just want to thank the community for the thoughtful comments, and just to acknowledge that process of the role is really that those are really administration questions, and I would like to be informed of the answers.
Thank you for that. Trustee Quintana.
I think that's a really thoughtful request, trustee Kaufman, and just to piggyback off that, I would love to see how those emails and calls and public comments are being reflected into the plans themselves for the campuses and the consolidations, because I think that when we talk about engagement, we're asking people for their inputs so that we can tailor the process to their needs. And so I would love to see, whenever that happens, like, maybe a little asterisk or something like, we got this from, straight from the community, you know? That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Hunter.
Thank you. I'm excited about the additional opportunities for communication, but I just did want some clarification. The CAC plus, for people who are watching, what if I don't have a child to go to a school, but I live in the neighborhood and I have grandchildren? Could I be part of the CAC plus?
Yes, you can. It's actually encouraged.
Okay, so when we say, because we sometimes think about CAC as being parents, even though we do have some community members, but that, this is an opportunity for the community at large to work with the school that they care about. Like, I love this school, it's in my neighborhood, and I want to communicate about what's happening with it, know more about it, so that people have an opportunity to still have their voices heard. That's, that's a lot of emails that we've been getting, is like, I'm trying to speak, but there's no place to speak, or I've missed this opportunity. So this is afforded to people. I'm excited about that. And then finally, I have a question about the timeline that we have. This is a big, large, sort of like, in this month, this month? As we get closer to those months, are there gonna be more granular breakdowns of what's happening so that we can keep people aware?
For the, so, so yes, we have those timelines. They're very dense. So what we endeavor to do is to do 30, 60, 90-day look-aheads, which is what is on one of the graphics, but I can certainly replicate that for both, so accountability and for consolidations. You know, the roadmap is easy to digest, and it's easy to reference back over and over again, but yes, Dr. Rachel French, our project manager, does carry a very detailed schedule. And so we try to distill from that kind of these look-aheads, but if, maybe I can get some additional input, we can talk about what that would look like, because we want to provide that detail, but there's a lot happening.
We have such a diverse community, I'm like, yes, and.
Yeah.
So there are those people who just want, like, the graphics that show when things would possibly be happening.
Yeah.
And then we have people, like I used to be, who's gonna sit with 5,000 sheets of paper and dig down and really want to get to know it, and I just want to provide a balance for both, or the spectrum of our community be able to participate fully.
Yeah, I think one thing we could do, as we launch the website on tomorrow, and then update the one for consolidations, and we've done this for bonds in the past, is just, we just say, this is version, you know, May 5th, 2025, the detailed schedule. It's dense, it doesn't look pretty, but it's, it's a work deliverable, internal work deliverable. And then for those that want to pull it and review it, they can do that.
I appreciate that.
We're happy to do that.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. That's all.
Thank you. Trustee Singh, any questions? So I have one, want to express appreciation on slide 15, I think it is, yeah, with the CAC plus concept, and we know that having a group of people to help create a turnaround plan and then to be there to support is a really important piece of this. So I know when we're talking about school improvement, if you could just translate what you mean by that, that includes TEA turnaround campuses with Fs. Can you just share kind of what this applies to?
Yeah, so when we think about improvement work within Austin ISD as we move forward, we are including in this set of schools, the schools that are projected to receive their second F by way of 23, 24 accountability, which means they most likely have, well, they, in fact, in this case, would have an F before that from 22, 23. And so that ultimately becomes a set of schools that's 19, but with the three are restarts, and so they have kind of a different, I mean, it's this, but it's also just a lot more, because it's required from the agency. So this would include all the schools that would be expected to be on a turnaround plan due to the 23, 24 accountability ratings being released, which they haven't, but we know what those are. So we want to be proactive, want to be responsive, because when those do drop, there will be guidance from TEA. The fear is, is that that will occur, and the timelines will be actually in the fall semester, when you're actually expected to implement the plan. So we are, that's what is included in this group.
And, yes, and to add to that, I know our community has been calling for groups like this that are contemplated in the statute for Webb, Dobie, and Burnett. Will this also be created there? So these groups haven't been created in time to help shape the plan, but going forward, this will be at those campuses as well.
That's correct. Which is why we use improvement versus...
Turnaround.
Because improvement is inclusive of turnaround.
Yes, okay, thank you. And I think that's just a term that maybe we hadn't used at a meeting before and wanted to be really sure people knew kind of the whole universe that was gonna be brought in. And for anyone who's interested, on slide 15, you can see kind of a short, partial list of the kinds of groups, neighborhood associations, as trustee Hunter was saying, grandparents, people from preschools, you know, people from the neighborhood. And if you have anything to share about that, I think that would be helpful, because we'll be calling on people as a district, right, to really lean in and engage.
Yeah, I think, you know, we had a big old list, and we pulled from that some that I think were representative of the types of partners we would expect. So I think it's worth just listing, I mean, students, you know, not only students at the school, like, for its secondary, but also, you know, maybe students that are, you know, moving to a high school that are in middle school, we want to make sure we're inclusive. HOA representation, alumni, preschools in the area, PTAs, business reps, representatives from the area, service providers, different partners, TTE partners, arts partners, faith-based organizations are always very involved in the community, and they have a lot of great information to share and, you know, resources to assist with. So we really wanted to make sure that we were broad in the group. We don't necessarily have, like, a number, you know? I want to be really honest, it's not, you know, we're not sitting, putting, you know, constraints or defining really clearly how many makes is appropriate. We just want to be inclusive and acknowledge that it's more than just what we would expect a CAC, given what the work is. And I think it's also important, this little blue line around it, we want to, I use this word, that we want to protect our schools, because there's gonna be a lot of work that's done. And, and as I said before, this is a very loving, caring community in Austin, and there are gonna be partners that want to support the whole, or support four or five campuses, and they're not gonna know necessarily how to engage. And so you want them to engage with the district, through the district-level committee, so that we can assist them in how to support. So that's why that second part of it is so important. We really want to kind of support that, create that avenue in that way.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Any additional questions, comments? Yeah, trustee Kaufman.
I'll try to be succinct, but I just, what I don't see in this initial plan and presentation still is the kind of evidentiary framework for school closings, saving money in the short term or the long term. And so I just want to reiterate the question I've asked before, and it's something I think we really would owe to the communities that we're discussing this with, that we would owe them the kind of evidence to say that cutting, like, potentially closing schools actually has either resulted in cost savings in the short term and the long term in AISD, or more globally, when it's been done in other districts, because there is, there are studies and evidence out there that says that closing schools, it sounds like it will save money, right? Because we are spending money, if we close it, we will stop spending money. But the evidence about all the other costs that can come up, both financial costs that come up with transportation, and with providing additional services, and with increased class sizes, and with potentially more remediation or extra services needed for kids, because they are now in a different setting where they're not getting the education they had before. The cost to the community that perhaps we can hopefully get the city of Austin to help with, but there are costs to the community of no longer having that in the area. There are transportation costs for families, there are all these types of things that come up, many of them financial costs. So if we could at least focus on the financial costs and see the evidence that says that we can have confidence that if we make these incredibly hard and painful decisions, that they will result in the savings that we're asking for, because otherwise, it's a political expedient to say, to tell the powers that be who are insisting, or the community people who say, you're spending too much money, you're getting smaller, you must cut. That, we might answer that, but then end up having no savings to show. So in particular, I would love to go back to the recent school closings in Austin, I would like to go back to the school closings years ago, and really dig, is there evidence from those closings that they generated actual savings in the short term and the long term? And I would love to see the other kind of more global, national research responded to or presented in saying, this is why we feel that that is not what's gonna happen in Austin, or that this is what's gonna happen. So I just want to put that out there again at the early of this, because that will be what becomes my deciding vote in November.
Yeah, and trustee Kaufman, I appreciate that. I mean, being from this community and obviously participating in the most recent process, you know, I certainly understand where those comments are coming from, and there's, you know, research both ways, and I certainly want to acknowledge what we, bless you, what's happened, bless you, in Austin ISD. But also, I don't want to communicate that the way those funds were managed after that occurred was also the, the way that we would do it moving forward. So I think that the challenge that we have is kind of how to share that information, given the kind of limitations we have on time. And so maybe we look at building a video, providing some resources, deploying that video, because there's a lot to it. We've shared some slides in the past, in the past year, but I do hear you. I think it's important that we do that. It's something that I'm more than happy to talk about, but we just need to find the right space to do it and in the right kind of mechanism to do it.
Yeah, and so step one is that that analysis has been done, right? And then step two is, what's the effective way to communicate that? But doing the analysis, like, that's the piece that I think is most important to me. And then as far as, like, there's some research for and some against, like, always with research, like, the pivotal question is, like, what, not just what works, but what works for whom under what conditions? And so knowing that these are our conditions under which we're considering this, this is the state of AISD, this is what our community looks like, this is how our students are distributed, this is what the socioeconomic segregation looks like in our city, et cetera, et cetera. Where have we seen conditions like that in terms of school closures, and how has that resulted, right? So I don't question that in some contexts, school closures save money and without significant harm to student populations, but I don't want to do that on an act of faith, I really want to do that with evidence.
Thank you. Additional comments? All right, thank you.
Of course.
And it is now time to move on to our public testimony for items on the consent agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting. Oh, no, sorry, we have the intruder detection audit before that. Thank you. Can you introduce the next item, please?
Yes, I'd love to, President Boswell. Yes, I'd love to, President Boswell. Thank you tonight. We have Dr. Jacob Reach, Chief Officer, Governmental Relations and Board Services, to share the notice of intruder detection audit update. Floor is yours, Jacob.
Thank you, Superintendent Segura, and Board of Trustees. So TEA has conducted intruder audits at 18 schools since we last met. At least three schools in Austin ISD failed to meet all standards during the audit, and they must complete the corrective actions within 60 days. Since August of 2024, 110 campuses out of 111 have been audited by TEA. So we are at 99%, well above the requirement set by the state for the percentage of campuses that need to be audited. And so we are most likely complete for the year, and that ends the report for today.
Thank you very much. Any questions, trustees, about the intruder detection audit? What's that? This is legally required, and it is, yes.
Okay, thank you. I have to ask before?
I understand.
I've spent our time, sorry.
And we've only spent 43 seconds.
Okay. Dr. Reach, I did have a quick question. So you said 110 of 111? So I feel like we're always around that 99, 100%. What is it for other school districts?
75%.
75%. Is there any particular reason why we seem to always, and we, I'm glad that it happened, because if they're unsafe conditions, then, I mean, I witnessed one this morning, wasn't really, I saw a kid open a door, I was like, don't do that. But I'm just wondering, is it like a, how do I say this? Is it a repeat of the same campuses? Is it the same infraction? Like, when we keep, because we keep, we never have 100% clean, which I would imagine with as many schools, we would not. But I'm just wondering if we're having some, like, I guess, the lack, for lack of a better word, repeat offenders?
Yeah, so what we tend to see most often are exterior doors that either do not properly latch or were somehow left open. Many times, it's because of no fault of any student or staff member, it's just that we need to fix that door.
Okay.
To confirm for the board, as soon as these are identified, Mr. Simon, who works on each one of these plans, will turn it over to our maintenance staff, and that is prioritized to go fix right away. So if we say, hey, this door at such-and-such elementary did not latch properly, and we were cited on that, that goes to the top of the list to be responded to.
Perfect, thank you for that. And I know we are inundated with things that we are trying to take care of, and things we're trying to do, and we have all this training for teachers and all of this introduction. I am wondering how we're helping campus communities understand, because, I mean, I, I mean, I haven't got a ticket in a really long time, but other trustees have. And so when you get a ticket, right, you are very cautious about driving for a while, and then you're not, because you're separated from the pain of the event. And so in all seriousness, we were very diligent, I think a lot of people were after Uvalde, but I feel like without the reminder for people, right, that we need to continue to be vigilant. And I would like to know how the district is helping people, you know, because I saw kids opening up the beautiful gates that we built, right? They figured out a way to do this and do that and get the gate open. The gate is there to keep them safe. The gate is there to keep them safe, not to give you a shortcut to class. But I mean, I understand, you're 16 and it's a large campus, so you're going to take the shortcuts. If you look around northeast, pretty much those fences are ripped apart because kids have figured out how to go under, over, and around them, the old, like smaller chain links. So how do we help students, how do we help students and teachers like, like say, we've been super lucky, right? Even when we had an active shooter near a school, we were protected. So to be more cautious, I don't know how we would like integrate that into all the other things we're having to do.
Yeah, so the first thing I would mention is that part of our steps is to do weekly door sweeps. There is a staff member assigned at every campus whose responsibility is to complete that weekly door sweep. And then they keep a record of that sweep. And Mr. Simon and his team will sometimes check those records to see, okay, has this campus been completing those weekly? So that's one step that we take. Another, and I need to better understand how widespread this is, but I visited three middle schools over the last week, and for each one, I tend, you know, I tend to park in the back normally, which is what I do, and come in through the back. And I noticed that at all of those campuses, they had signs on the doors that said, not entrance for students and family members. Don't prop open, go to the front of the school. So it had reminders on the doors, both for the students and for the community members and the staff. And then the third thing that I would mention is when we do get a campus that may be cited under one of these, we are required to go out and meet with that campus staff and share the reason for being cited and the steps that are helped provided through the Texas School Safety Center, which is out of San Marcos. We have to go through those steps with that staff community to remind them, here's what we're expected to do, here's how we follow through on that, here's what we're checking. And that's another requirement that we actually have to submit to TEA. When I say that we have 60 days to submit, that's part of it, is that we've done that training. So that's another thing that we do to help support our staff.
Okay, perfect. And then are we doing anything? Because believe it or not, middle school students are really kind and generous. And they will see you walking to the door and their hand, they want to push that door open for you. And I always say, thank you, baby, don't do that, right? So how do we help our young people understand that your intuition is to always help, but they need to ring the buzzer? I've closed the door on another parent. Like if you're a parent, then you can buzz in to get in too, just like I did. So how do we help our young people understand that? Are we doing anything or is that incorporated in any sort of character education? Or I don't know, what are we doing?
Yeah, I'm not sure if any of my colleagues would know of any character education or additional support we may do for students. I know what we're doing for staff.
Yeah, thank you. Dr. Reach, Christine Sineport, Chief of Operations, Emergency Management falls under my purview. So in addition to those signs, there are other signs to remind those students, don't open the doors, right? Like let those, let those folks know that we're not going to hold the door open or they need to go over there. So that's one of those like visual reminders. There's also campus safety coordinators at every campus. So there's a touch point between that emergency management specialist and that campus safety coordinator that they're having touch points. They have things that they have to be in compliance with. And like Dr. Reach spoke about with the compliance piece and turning in and going through and saying, hey, you had this audit or this interior audit and you failed on this part, here's why. What are we going to do about it in the future? And so that's documented.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Trustee Hunter, I'll also mention, it's one of your schools. I will never forget the Norman Sims custodian who told me, no, sir, you are not going through that door, you are going to the front door like you're supposed to. And I said, you're right, that is what I'm supposed to do. And I apologized to him and I brought him back a rave later for the amazing work he was doing to keep that school safe.
I love that, thank you. Any further questions? Good, thank you very much, Dr. Reach, I appreciate it. And we always have a chance to talk about safety and security as well during executive session for safe, you know, questions that are not safe to share publicly. So thank you for that. Okay, now it is time to move to public testimony for items on our consent agenda. Members of the public wishing to participate in the public testimony portion of our meeting called a dedicated Austin ISD phone line in advance of the meeting to sign up to speak in person or record their remarks. Tonight, we have two people who signed up to speak in person and 21 who left a recorded message. We'll begin with our in-person testimony. To provide as many opportunities for input as possible within a limited time period at this meeting, each speaker will be allotted one minute. No substitutions or yielding of time to others is permitted. Callers who signed up to speak in person, please come to the microphone when your name is called. As you come to the microphone, there is a device that will light up as you move through your one minute of allotted time. And when the buzzer sounds, please make a final thought in one sentence. You'll also see a button on the microphone, so please turn that on so the light is green so we can hear you and people watching can hear you. We ask that whether you come to give a complaint or praise, that you please reference any staff member by position or abbreviated last name. We ask that all audience members, whether speaking or not, please show respect for others at all times. And thank you. Our in-person speakers for tonight are Steve Swanson and Cecilia Leonard. So if you can come to the microphone and share your comments, we'll begin there.
There, can you hear me? Good. Steve Swanson, good evening. I'm a 30-year volunteer in Texas education, including CACs, which has allowed me to learn a lot about school improvement planning in Texas. For school improvement planning to become real for our students and schools, we must have a TEA turnaround plan. Stop school turnaround planning and demand to see a plan for TEA, including its lawyers, to turn around and start following the law and stop violating our students, parents, teachers, and everyone in this room's rights. Rights to TEA helping schools with effective community involvement and school improvement planning and not harming them with turnaround planning. The existence of school turnaround planning in the book and handouts previously shared with the board demonstrate TEA has failed to follow the law for school improvement. Also, please know, respect, and follow the teachers who have demonstrated the courage and the skill to learn their lawful rights and to stand up and share them with board and community members. Board members, please stand up, call a press conference, tell the press you are demanding that TEA create and implement a TA turnaround plan and start the harmful school turnaround planning process. Please review the handout I have, and I welcome your questions when you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Swanson. Next up is Cecilia Leonard.
Hi, Cecilia Leonard, I'm a math teacher at Webb Middle School. So my school is still undergoing a very harmful and destructive restaffing process. We really need clear communication as soon as possible so we can get some relief from it. I'm here on behalf of my coworkers and my students. We really need relief from this quickly. We're undergoing the restaffing as we speak with no end in sight. I want you guys to know that our principals are being considered for leadership roles at Doby and Burnett. Remember, we're at Webb. And they're, so my question is, are they not transformative enough to stay at their own school? But somehow they're transformative enough to go help another school that's in crisis? I'm asking, how does that make any sense? Another good question I have is, does AISD leadership make these decisions based on common sense? Are you aware that the campus intervention team is not collaborating with our campus leadership team to create a targeted improvement plan? This collaboration is required by both the TEA, the Texas Education Code and Texas Administrative Code, therefore we are in violation of it. Why are decisions being made about our community behind closed doors? Are you aware that the next steps for me and hundreds of others who are, whose rights are being violated by this process is to file a form of complaints directly with the TEA? If hundreds of families and educators document this kind of misconduct, that volume of complaints could absolutely contribute to a formal investigation. I'm still waiting on my public information requests. I deserve to know what's happening with my school. I deserve to be part of the planning process and so does my community. You may have the power right now, but what you don't have is what we have. What we have is the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. We will now play the recorded message for public testimony, so please listen carefully.
I'm a student from Webb Middle School. To tell us our parents and our community that everything will be okay, even when you take our administrators, is like saying we'll be fine if you rip our hearts and you expect us to keep going. People call us racist, and yes, we are, but it's a shame that we have to be. The heart of a school, taking him away is like taking our heart and telling us we'll be okay. We're not sure if we'll be, but you don't know us, so you don't understand this.
Hello, my name is Sean Connis, I work at Webb Middle School. According to the Texas Administrative Code 97.1061 and 97.1063, the campus intervention team, which is assigned by TEA's commissioner, should work in collaboration with Webb Middle School's campus leadership team in developing the updated targeted improvement plan and turnaround plan. Webb's campus leadership team includes the principal, other admin, instructional leaders, and counselors. I have asked many members of our campus leadership team if there has been any collaboration. They all have said no. TA's team has not collaborated with them at all. Why hasn't TA's campus intervention team collaborated with Webb's campus leadership team as mandated in the administrative code? Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. I am a teacher at Webb Middle School. Although this is my first year on campus, I've lived in the surrounding community for nearly a decade. I chose Webb because of the strong leadership, the dedicated staff, and the sense of belonging our students feel every day. The way this district managed restart has been handled has broken my trust in AISD. I've been asked to return, but many of my colleagues and our incredible administration who built a safe and thriving school have been asked to find other jobs. This is not transformation, it is displacement. I urge you to pause, listen to the community, and reconsider this plan. True change must involve the voices of those who know these students best. Please don't dismantle what's working. Don't make us walk away from the kids that we love.
I'm Melissa Brockway and I teach at Webb. The rush to remove principals and staff has been chaotic and illogical. You say you want to attract and keep highly effective teachers, but you are driving them out through fear and instability. Before getting input from the community, all of our jobs were posted and principals were not given the option to reapply. Now we are being pressured to give an answer of whether we will stay or go without knowing the principal, without seeing a finalized contract, and without knowing the length of the workday, the work week, or the work year. You need to treat us like professionals. Additionally, you have shown hypocrisy in being willing to move leadership around between the three turnaround campuses to fill positions. How can our principals be eligible to transform other TAP campuses but not our own? The safest and fastest option for continuing to improve upon student outcomes is to implement the co-principal model to keep the current leadership in place at Webb. If we are truly in a rush, starting over from zero does not make sense.
Hi, my name is Serena Webb. I want to talk about what it feels like to lose our teachers. The teachers, they're not letting come back are the ones who know us. They build trust with us, they know how we learn and what we, what we struggle with and how to help us feel seen. We don't want random people burdened or who are just here for the paycheck. We want to keep learning from our teachers who already have built relationships with us because those bonds matter. We're ahead of the new teach, we're afraid that the new teachers won't understand us or won't stay. Our school doesn't need a start over, it needs support to grow what already is working. Please listen to the students, we want our teachers back.
Me llamo Fernando, soy un padre de familia de Webb, sobre la agenda item 3. Assistía al community meeting in Webb y me decepcionó mucho lo que oí. El plan del distrito se ve muy apresurado. Lo único que ha mejorado en Webb en estos tres años ha sido el director y el equipo de Webb. La escuela es más segura, el personal ha construido una comunidad y una cultura muy fuerte, y mis hijos se sienten orgullosos de su escuela. Mientras tanto, el test no tiene sentido y la escuela recibe menos fondos cada año. El plan del distrito propone cambiar lo único que funciona actualmente, el personal. En lugar de ese plan mal hecho, construyen sobre lo que ya funciona y denle al personal actual la financiación y el apoyo que se les ha negado durante los últimos tres años. Dice el distrito que hay que traer gente que tenga experiencia. Yo digo que sí los traigan, pero como asesores, porque también se necesita personal que tenga experiencia con la cultura y las familias de nuestra comunidad. Si esta solución propuesta sigue adelante, voy a enviar a mis hijos a un charter el próximo año, porque no tengo fe que el distrito pueda resolver estos problemas. Gracias.
This is an interpretation into English from Fernando. My name is Fernando, I am a parent from Webb. Regarding Agenda Item 3, I attended the community meeting at Webb and was very disappointed by what I heard. The district's plan seems very rushed. The only thing that has improved at Webb in the last three years is the principal and the Webb team. The school is safer, the staff has built a strong community and culture, and my children are part of the school. Meanwhile, the staff changes make no sense, and the school receives less funding every year. The district's plan proposes changing the only thing that is currently working, the staff. Instead of this poorly thought-out plan, build on what is already working and give the current staff the funding and support they have been denied for the past three years. The district says we need to bring in people with experience. I say bring them in, but as advisors, because we also need staff who have experience with the culture and families in our community. And if this proposed solution goes forward, I will send my children to a charter school next year because I have no faith that the district can solve these problems. Thank you.
This is Correa Balesbi, Wellness Counselor at Webb Middle School. Texas Education Code 398.101 requires Webb to submit an updated targeted improvement plan and a turnaround plan. However, per Education Code 398.051, a campus intervention team should be assigned to carry out the planning process. According to Texas Administrative Code 97.1063, this should include a district coordinator and a principal direct supervisor. All procedures outlining the requirements for this targeted intervention plan, which include Education Code 398.101, the order for preparation of campus turnaround plan, require the campus intervention team to collaborate with a campus leadership team as outlined in Administrative Codes 97.1061 to 97.1064. I am part of Webb's leadership team and have never been given the opportunity, we have never been given the opportunity to participate in any process with a campus intervention team. Instead, our district leaders have been sent to give us messages about how things are going to be done rather than to invite collaboration. Excluding us is unfair, ineffective, and unlawful. I urge the board to demand transparency and ensure campus collaboration moving forward. Thank you.
Marie, parent in AISD, speaking on 3.1, the superintendent report and fund balance agenda items and in response to Trustee Singh's addition. The community is acutely aware of how serious the district's funding position has become, yet the cuts are hitting classrooms where there's long been nothing left to cut. Many have called on AISD to reduce HQ expenses, including staffing. Over 87% of AISD's budget goes to salaries. Public records show AISD pays some of the highest salaries among large Texas districts and remains top-heavy administratively. Across Texas and in other states, some superintendents have accepted pay reductions or significantly downsized central office operations. I urge this administration and board to do the same. Drastic reductions in HQ staffing, consideration of leasing out the entire HQ building, review of the org chart comparing Paul Cruz's org chart a few short years ago when we had 86,000 kids, now down to 72,000, and a series review of executive pay and hiring decisions are necessary if AISD is truly committed to prioritizing students and protecting instruction.
As a second-year math teacher with a master's in education, I have consistently delivered student growth through data-driven instruction and targeted ESL strategies, especially for historically struggling students. My students' progress speaks volumes. Not only have they shown this growth on mandated tests, but many have succeeded in their algebra classes this year and some even in advanced algebra. Despite these results, I wasn't asked to return, not due to ineffectiveness, but because I had not met a narrow metric requiring three years of highly effective ratings. This decision reflects a system driven by fear, not improvement. We are losing transformative educators, not for a lack of impact, but from a lack of respect, transparency, and meaningful support. We need leadership that values partnership over punishment and growth over rigid benchmarks.
My name is Letitia Anderson, I'm calling in about Agenda Item 3.1. Good evening. The Texas Education Agency's extension on Doby Middle School's turnaround plan highlights a deeper issue. Austin ISD's decision to offer 15,000 to 20,000 bonuses to lure new teachers to Doby and similar campuses is a slap in the face to the dedicated educators who've been doing the hard work all along without proper support, resources, or recognition. Why do we have to entice educators as if these students are some kind of special project? These are not charity cases, these are bright, capable students deserving of consistent investment, not a rotating door of incentivized staff. And how convenient it is to suddenly find 10 And how convenient it is to suddenly find tens of thousands of dollars when we've been told over and over again that there's no money, no money for supplies, no money for support staff, no money for retention. We demand a return on our investments. It's time to stop patching holes and start building equity, starting with honoring the ed-
My name is Michael Gier, and I am the art teacher at Webb Middle School, and I've been at Webb for 17 years. This community is like a family to me. I've seen families come through. And the improvement that we have seen through the principal we've got and the work ethic that we've put in has put us closer and closer to meeting the goal. I feel like there's a one-size-fits-all issue that I have, and I want this district to get to the point. I don't know if you know what it feels like to watch your teachers be told they can't come back and face their classroom where the students are asking, "Are they coming back?" One-size-fits-all is the star test. One-size-fits-all is closing schools and consolidating them together, thinking that each community struggles are the same. So I need somebody to figure out how to stand up, speak up, and treat the people that have been here for a long time who dedicate their lives to communities like this to give a better rollout, the same you would do in the South school. So we're waiting for somebody to speak up and get to the point. We need you to just get to the point of what-
Hello, my name is Lauren Hernandez James, and I am calling on behalf of Webb Middle School. I am a 10-year teacher in this district and currently serving as the avid coordinator and elective teacher. I want to say how disappointed I am in how this entire situation has been communicated to us as a staff. When we were first told of the restart plan, it was delivered in a cold and personal manner without answers to most of our questions. Many of our staff were pressured to say yes when told they were eligible to reapply without contracts or anything in writing. This district may claim we are staffed, but this is misleading. Many of us, including myself, are actively applying outside of the district because our trust and faith has been broken. Please do not misinterpret the staffing reality. This has been handled very poorly. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gloria Orozco, and I am calling about my concerns with Webb Middle School. My daughter is a teacher there, and she is a dedicated teacher and doesn't know if she will be returning, hasn't had the proper messages sent to her that follow legal procedures. And she is an excellent teacher. She pours her heart and soul into what she does, as well as the other teachers on the campus. They are highly invested in the students. And with the students rallying up and protesting outside of the school, that should let you know how much they do love their teachers and what-
I'm speaking up to say, we don't need new teachers. We need more resources and support for the teachers we already have. You're throwing us away just because we're in a bad place. Even if our school is struggling, we deserve help, we deserve to be supported. Our teachers care about us. They help us, support us, and prepare us for life, not just for the test. Please don't take away our school, our teachers, and neither your support. What we need is support. Please stop changing things and judging us because you think our school is ghetto. I hope you take our needs into account.
Hello, my name is Jeff Anzano, and I am a sixth-grade math teacher here at Webb Middle School. I am calling because I am one of the few teachers here that is eligible to come back. After receiving my call a day later, I get a team message stating I need to decide whether I am staying or not by the end of Friday last week. All of this seems so rushed, why? I want to return to the school, but I have not been given a contract. I cannot say yes to something when I don't even know what I'm agreeing to. This violates basic principles of professional communication and planning. I asked Tuesday concerning about the contract, and the response was, "We will hold an information session so that details can be provided and questions can be answered," saying that this will happen within this week. It's Thursday now, I haven't received anything. So, yeah.
Greetings and salutations. And I was not told about this intervention plan until the meeting last Monday. I want to keep my teachers because I have a very strong connection with most of my teachers, especially because I was also here at Webb last year, and I've put a lot of work and progress into bringing up my grades and building relationships and connections with all my teachers. I personally think it is not very fair for all of our teachers and students having to cut off our relationships and our connections with each other and our bonds just because they want to do a restart. I personally think that that's not fair, and I personally think that they should just offer us more, what do you call it, help. And I think they should offer us more help and support by not getting rid of our teachers and getting rid of our principal, especially whenever we've worked our entire, the entire time that we were here at Webb, especially whenever we worked so hard to get these like-
I am a life skills teacher at Webb Middle School. We currently have 21 students in our life skills program. We only have two teachers and three PAs. For the students that require one-to-one support, we do not have enough for that and for the small groups. We need to have more teachers. But if the other middle schools have closed as well, we will have even more students in the life skills department than we can handle. The life skills program has already faced the change to TEA already. We need to make sure that AISD continues to go into compliance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Gomez. I'm the PTA president at Burnett Middle School. My comment is, please don't take our teachers and our principals away. You're creating an error. Please just think about what you're doing and think about the students and their future. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Helen Miller, and I want to address Agenda Item 3.1. As a concerned community member, I want to highlight growing concern that central administration has become top-heavy. While we continue to see steady decline in student enrollment, we are also witnessing a constant pattern of high and upper-level staff. This raises critical questions. Why are there too many high-level positions being added when the student population is shrinking? What is the justification for this expansion at the top? Most importantly, where's accountability from the board to ensure that these decisions are physically responsible and directly support student outcome? Our focus should be on classroom, not corner offices. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jansey Abraham, and I am a teacher at Webb Middle School. The district's turnaround plan has been messy and is not moving our students closer to success. Last week, I was called and told that I am not eligible to continue to work at Webb. Two days later, they called back to change their minds. I have received no information about the workload requirements. As a parent, how am I supposed to make decisions for my own family when the district can't tell me the basic parameters of my job? If we're truly in a rush, starting over from zero does not make sense. The current Webb leadership has already helped Webb show growth. Keep them in place and choose a co-principal model. Chaotically changing the entire leadership will hurt student achievement for the next year because building relationships takes time we don't have.
Good evening. My name is Christina Nava, and I'm calling on behalf of Webb Middle School. I'm a second-year CTE elective teacher and would like to know what the long-term plan is for the campuses being evaluated for improvement plans. Specifically, I would like to know if there's a plan to consolidate Webb and Doby's middle schools down the road. I know for myself and a majority of my colleagues, when considering our options for employment, we would like to know if we choose to stay, if we are going to be put in the same exact position within the next couple of years. We know that you wanted to close Webb in 2019, and in the past couple of weeks, we received an email saying that certain AISD schools will be consolidated in the 26-27 school year so a campus property can be sold. It seems that the timing lines up with our district takeover. Is that the long-range plan? Thank you.
Thank you. This concludes our public testimony. Are there any questions or clarifications? Trustee, do you want to go ahead?
So we received several comments here, and then I've heard from the community earlier regarding the Texas Administrative Code and targeted improvement plans and the normal sequence of events. I'm aware that TEA put out guidance, I think, specific for this year, so I wonder if the administration could, hopefully succinctly, I don't want to go into all the minutia on it, but can we explain, are we following the rules?
Yeah, so, yes. I can bring the team up because if you want details about step-by-step, I mean, I just, because there are lots of questions, there's confusion, and I-
I don't think we need the minutia on it because I know it's a complicated process, but why, if you could say succinctly, why is it different now?
Our timeline for the turnarounds for '23-'24 or for a targeted improvement plan versus a restart?
I think the question that I keep hearing is, why are we not engaging the process for the targeted improvement plan right now?
Yeah. So I probably need Angel and Dr. Amerson to- So a targeted improvement plan is different than a restart or a turnaround plan. So the targeted improvement plan, only one of the three schools has that, which is Doby. The other two do not have a targeted improvement plan. They have a turnaround plan. And so this is where it gets really nuanced, so I want to be clear, precise, just because-
And I'd like to say the guidance we've gotten from our Lone Star Governance Coach is that if you're calling staff up to answer the question, you probably need to tell us you're going to answer that later. I think a brief explanation from you about whether we're following the law or not, addressing the allegations that our community is making, I think, is good. We also have an opportunity to get legal guidance on some of the questions we're hearing from our community in executive session. And so I just want to clarify that. And if we choose to spend some of our time this way, I think that's an option we have. But I just want to know.
Yeah, I just want to kind of, one, the yes or no, are we following the rules?
We are.
Okay. And how is it that we're following the rules when we're not doing what the community? The community's saying we're not following the Education Code, so what is it that's allowing us to do that?
I think that's where the calling up of the team, because there are lots of different steps between a turnaround plan-
I'm not asking the steps, though. I'm just asking, how is it that we're allowed to do it differently?
I think I don't understand why we're not doing it differently. I guess I'm trying to understand the difference that you're referring to, given what steps we're following.
That, for the part the community's asking, is saying that Education Code, my understanding, they're saying we're required to develop a targeted improvement plan and we're specific timelines that are established in the Education Code. Why are we doing it differently than that?
I think-
And I would say I'm hearing that we're supposed to have a campus intervention team that's part of the turnaround plan. Does that help clarify what we're hearing from the community?
So to be, just to be, to be able to answer the questions, it's going to require the full team. There's a lot of people working on these plans, following the law, making sure that-
I think this is important. Can we do it in five minutes and take that out of our budget conversation? I think it is important.
Can I, just before you jump in, so there's a lot of different things, right? So there's a tip, there's a tap, and there's a turnaround, there's a restart. So turnaround is the tap. What I hear people saying is, "There's a process. A school is in trouble, then you're supposed to go to the tip. And then if the tip is not succinct and does not work out, then you do a tap." People are asking, like, "Why have you leapfrogged over in a restart to have a tap?" So the first part of your question was, "Are we following the law?" The answer was, "Yes." Second part of your question was, "How would then, if we're not doing a tip and whatever, how are we staying the course?" Am I that clarified?
Yes.
Raise your hand if you can answer that question. Who can answer that question? I just want to know who can answer it first.
Can you restate the question?
So, people are saying, "We don't have a tip," right? campuses, "We only know that one school has a tip."
Yes.
We are talking about a turnaround plan, the big turnaround, like, big letters turnaround. And then we're talking about a restart. So if we don't have a tip at a school, how does that mean we're following the rules? Yes. So there are lots of-
Hang on. Jacob, do you need to-
Yes.
Well, come on.
Would you like to come up?
Got to be quick.
I just want to be very, very, I want to make sure we, because there's a lot of things happening in parallel at the moment. Just be crystal clear.
We need to understand that we've had a lot of gaps in accountability due to COVID since 2019. So in 2019, all of these campuses did have a tip.
Okay.
They implemented them. They were even extended one year because there was no accountability released in '20, and so TEA required those to be extended. Doby also got a tip because of their federal accountability rating. So that is the only tips that were ordered in 2023, were based off of federal accountability. And so that is why Doby has one right now. But those other schools did have one, but we had these gaps that normally we would not have seen. So normally, how you explained it earlier is exactly how it would occur. You get your first F, you implement your tip. You get your second, you get ordered to do a turnaround plan. You implement those for two years. Either you turn it around or you don't. And now, based off of current law, the commissioner then has to take an accountability action. We are operating under a very different system because of that no accountability in the '19 school year, in the '20 school year, because of the different level of accountability that we got for '22, and then because now we're dealing with '23 just getting released. And so this turnaround plan is actually due to '23's accountability rating. As we've shared earlier, we could run into a very unpleasant situation to where we could have '24 released and '25 released, all within a quick period of time. So they could actually run all the way through four years, or at least we'd be getting that order from TEA through, you know, in a very short period of time, which typically is not the process. And so TEA has released different guidance on their website. They have not released guidance on every single part of it, but they do have guidance on the community engagement and the development of a tap plan on their website, on what their expectation is right now, based off of this new timeline. Likewise, the law actually requires it being turned in. I think the date is April 30th, but right now, they're using a May date. That is the guidance that we received from TEA, is that May will be our due date. And so some of this seems unusual because, I believe, because of these different things that we've experienced with the not-rated years, with the '23 and '24 being not rated because it was embargoed due to a lawsuit, and now '23 is released. And so that's why some of this does not seem like it's in our normal timeline. It's not.
I just want to summarize what I'm hearing here. Is TEA released new guidance because this is out of sequence from how it normally happened, and so we're following that guidance and not strictly what was in the Education Code because that's not practical for the release of the accountability?
What we are doing is TEA ordered us to do the turnaround plan for these three campuses, and they gave us a timeline, they gave us community engagement requirements, and they gave us the draft document, and we are working through that. We do have a staff member from TEA who supports us in this work, and we have the ability to reach out to her as needed to continue through this work. Our regional service centers also act as a support, as ordered by TEA, for any turnaround work for any district in the entire state. That's one of their duties and their work as well, and we're working with their turnaround team as well.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
I just want to also, as somebody who, I deal with the TAC every day. The TAC is, I don't want to-
Commissioner rules.
Yeah, but I'm saying that we have the TAC, but then we always have, TEA interprets the TAC and then gives us the guidance. So if you read the TAC, right, that's the letter of the law. Like, that's what it says. But when the commissioner interprets how it's going to be played out, that's really where you look at both, but you commit to what TEA says. I do the same thing- I do the same thing at work. It says teachers have to have this to be certified, but I go to TEA to see, like, what specifically am I checking? So yes, and, so that we're safe. So those links were, because that document's public, right?
Yes, it is. It's on the continuous improvement website on TEA's webpage.
Okay, let's get it on our web, let's get a link on ours. So people, remember, that's what we talked about, having that resource of that webpage so that people don't have to ask their cousin, their grandma, people still talking about closings, we're not talking about that right now. So people are still dealing with information that is convoluted because it's very highly emotional, so when you hear things, you're interpreting them, not necessarily with here, but back here. And so we want to make sure that when we can rest, we can think, then we can go see for ourselves what that information says. And they don't have to believe us or anybody else, they go see for themselves. So if we can get that on that webpage that we have, I think that's really going to be helpful for people. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? We're fine. These, again, these are important questions, and I think our community has had factual questions about this, about what the facts are, and I think that is important to address that. Thank you. Any additional questions? Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry to have to police my colleagues, I really apologize for the fact that we're having to do this, and appreciate it. Okay, as a reminder to our public, please feel free to share any general comments or questions on non-voting items with the board by email at trustees@austinisd.org. Next up is our section on information reports and updates, and we have the presentation of our general fund, food service, and debt service budgets. So Mr. Segar, can you please introduce this?
Yes, President Boswell, I'd like to welcome up Katrina Montgomery, our interim Chief Financial Officer, who will join me to share the presentation of the 202526 Recommended General Fund, Food Service, and Dirt, sorry, Debt Service Budgets. Katrina, you have the floor.
Hello, thank you very much. First, we're going to break this, our budgets down into two years. We're going to look at FY2425, which is our budget update for our current fiscal year, and then for FY2526, we're going to look at our recommended budget. So this is our projected budget for FY2425 slide, and then the far left, you see the gray, and this is where we were, the board approved the budget in June of 2024 for $78 million, and at that point, we said we'd have a fund balance of 17.2%. And then in January, we said we'd have a projected deficit of $110 million, which would have left us at 14.7%. And then in March, we projected that the number was going to decrease to $101 million, which that was great progress because in one month, you could see we reduced $9 million. And then now here in May, for our April financials, we're projecting that we went down to $98 million. So you can see that the trend went down again. Well, we added a few rows to this spreadsheet from what you've seen before, because some things happened after that that we want to make sure to make note of. There was instructional materials, there was an additional $5 million approved in May, and so what that's going to do is increase the deficit. But then also in July, we have money that we invested for recapture, for our recapture payment, that won't mature until July, and so that'll be $6 million worth of interest. So when you look at our deficit as of the April, what we're projecting is to be at $97 million, and you can see we've come down a lot. There's a lot of work that the campuses and our departments have done to get us from $78 million to $110, and now we're saying $97 point, $97 million, which will lead us, leave us with a fund balance of 16.4%. So there's still work that we need to do, and that's why we have this column in the far right-hand side. We still have two months' worth of expenses that we want, we want to see reduced, but we added that column so you can know that we still have work that we're going to do for the rest, for the month of May as well as into June. So this next slide is a slide that we did because we wanted to be really, really, really crystal clear about how we got to where we are today. And so we went over this, but let's go over it again. So we started off with a $78 million deficit when we passed our budget last year, but included in that, we had already made reductions of $29 million. And then in July, we got our updated TCAD, Travis Central Appraisal District Property Values, which was an additional $14 million, which got us to our $92 million deficit. And then you can see in January, when we presented our fiscal forecast, we had $34 million worth of reduction, so we had done a really good job, but then there were $40 million worth of adds. And some of those adds, $20 million, was special education, we have ERP was on there, service center, so we continuously gave money totaling $40 million. And then we had the revenue loss from SHARs for $12 million. So at the end of January, we said, this is when we started projecting the deficit at $110 million. And then in March, we projected the deficit at $101 million. We had $9 million worth of savings improvements, and some of those things came from our hiring freeze, as well as our reduction in expenditures, which were because we have our preapprovals for all purchase orders, our reduction in our limits for our P cards, so we did a really good job, preapproval for overtime. And then in April, when we just closed April a few weeks ago, we're seeing the numbers down to $97 million. Again, there was $9 million worth of reductions and savings from the same places we just talked about before, but then you will also see that we added here the additional interest earned, as well as the $5 million added for IMA. So we wanted to be really clear to show the story, so if someone picked this document up, they can see how we started, you know, we were going off a little bit by our deficit increasing, but how we're working to reduce, how we've worked to reduce the deficit. And we also want to be really clear that this is not final. On this next slide, we wanted to just make a couple of points, we wanted to be clear. AISD is projected to end FY2425 with a 16.4% fund balance, which is less than the 20% fund balance, 20% board policy. When we produced the budget, when the budget was passed last year, we were also at 17.2%, which was less than the 20%. So we still have some work to do. AISD is projected to end FY2425 with a deficit that is $19 million more than the adopted budget. And so let's just remember that that is as of April close. That will not be the number when we close in June. So now we're going to talk about FY2526, our recommended budget. So here's all, this slide shows all of the assumptions we'd use to create our budget. So the student data, we used enrollment as a snapshot, which is in October. It shows enrollment of 72,303 students. If you look at the number now, we have enrolled students of 72,500. So since snapshot to now, you can clearly see that our enrollment has increased, but we didn't use the latest number in our projections. So we wanted to be clear, we're still being very conservative with our enrollment number. Average daily attendance is at 93%, and average daily attendance, the number is 64,100. Even though as of today, we're higher than that number, we still were very conservative in our projections. So, and then you look at tax collections, the change in property value is a negative 2%, that is also going to be the same change in tax collections, and then our tax collection rate is at 99%. So the recommended budget summary, so this slide, we're not, we're going to spend some time on it, but there's going to be a slide, in the, in next couple of slides, we're going to spend a lot of time deep diving this. But for FY2526, our general fund, we're saying that our revenue is going to be $1,579 million. We're going to have recapture, a recapture payment of $716 million, operating expenditures of $990 million, and so that would leave us a change in fund balance for $127 million. And then you see we have vacancy savings, we have vacancy savings, we call that out because what we're saying here is that we're, we will not be 100% fully staffed. So if you take the $15 million there, that leaves us at an adjusted net change in fund balance of $112 million. So if we just stopped there, that would be the amount that the board would approve as the deficit for FY2526. But we have additional identified strategies that total $4 million. We have two potential land sales for a total of $45 million. We have identified new strategies, which we'll talk about on the next slide, for $20 million, and then we're going to have the forced reduction, which we've talked about, right? And the forced reduction is for $24 million. And when all, if all, once all of this goes through, we'll have a projected adjusted net change in fund balance of $19 million, which means we'd be taking $19 million out of our fund balance. If everything works the way that we see here on this slide in general fund, that will leave us with a 15% fund balance. If it doesn't, if we don't make the forced reduction, if everything else holds true without the forced reduction, that'll leave us at 12.2%. And we want to be really clear that that's a very low fund balance, and so that puts us in the place where we might have to borrow to cover payroll, as well as accounts payable. The food services, food services, and they're going to be flat, their revenue is going to equal their expenditures. Debt service, we're saying that the debt service revenue is lower than our operating expenditures. We talked about this a little bit because our tax values decreased, so our revenue is lower than the operating expenditure payment for, and so that means we'll take $28 million out of fund balance. This next slide shows the changes in general fund, it's just total expenditures, so it shows it by function. This is something that we have to present. It shows the FY2425 adopted budget at $1.7 billion. The 2526 that we're getting ready to, the board is going to vote on, says, has a recommended budget of $1.7 billion, and it leaves a change of $69 million. And so now, we've talked about 2425, where we are, what do we have, what we have to do. We've talked about the budget for 2526, and so now the next couple of slides are going to be really clear about the additional work that we have to do. So we've talked about our stable state or ideal state, and we've been very clear that we wanted this to be a balanced budget, as well as 20% funding, 20% fund balance, and so that's, we're going to talk about how that's changing a little bit, and protecting the quality of education. So the district administration is committed to a budget that achieves at a minimum of 15% fund balance for FY2526. What we've talked about is if we go below 15%, that starts to impact our cash flows and how that could impact us as far as having to borrow money to run our district. So the goal is to stay at 15%. And so when you look at this, we created this slide because we wanted to show you what it looks like. So you see 12% fund balance, so if we do 12% fund balance, and that's where we end up being, that only gives us operating money for 1.66 months, that is very, that is very low. 15% is where the district really wants us to land, which will give us operating expenditures of two, for two months. And what you will see on the second row is that we needed to make an additional $44 million worth of reductions. And over the last day or so, we've worked, been very strategic about how to come up with an additional $44 million in reductions. If we wanted to change the number to 17%, we would have to cut an additional $60 million, and if we wanted to get back to 20%, we'd have to reduce another $83 million. And what you will notice in that final right column is the 83 is more than the 63, and the reason is because we need to contribute and increase the fund balance, because for our previous years, we did not, we weren't at 20%. So for us to get back to a 20% fund balance, we would need to contribute to the fund balance, put money back in. Okay, so this next slide is where we want to talk about in detail. So you see, you have your FY2425 adopted budget, which has us at $78 million, that's the 17.2% fund balance. You guys know that part, right? The next column is the projected amount, which is where we're saying we will be now, which is $97 million. So if nothing else changes, even though we really believe these numbers, the fund, the deficit will reduce, but if nothing else changes, we will end at 16.4%. And so when we did the preliminary budget, we're basing that off of the projected budget, the column right before that, for 2425. So the preliminary budget is the budget that we produced and we talked about in April. Now the recommended budget is the budget that we're looking at as of today. So you can see that there's going to be some changes in revenue and recommended, because when we're creating the budget, we're constantly revising numbers. The preliminary budget was based on fourth, six weeks, and then the recommended budget is now based on fifth, six weeks' numbers. So our revenue is base, is 1.5, $1,579 million, less recapture of $716 million, operating expenditures are $990 million, so the net change in fund balance is 127 million. With the same vacancy savings of 15 million, you'll see we came up with a $112 million deficit. So if we just stop, that would be the deficit that the board would vote on on June 26. One of the things I want us to call out is if you look at the difference on preliminary, the 129 millions versus the recommended 112 million, you can see that the number has decreased. And the number has decreased, one, because of the identified strategies right below that line, the $19 million. We've gotten those, our strategies identified, and what we talked about last meeting is that we were going to start taking this off the top of budgets, so that we did not have to go year over, waiting six months, seven months for a department to say, yes, I can make it, oh, I'm trying, oh, I didn't do it, right? So once they agreed to what the difference, what their shortage was going to be, we took it off the top of their budget. So now you see everything, what we're going to call above the line. So you see, we have $112 million change in net fund balance, we still have $4 million in identified strategies, the two potential land sales of $45 million, identified new strategies of $20 million, and then the forced reduction of $24 million. On these slides, we're very clear that we're building a budget, including no state, additional state funding. So again, this will leave us at a $19 million deficit. If everything works the way that we're, we have it pictured here on recommended, which means the potential land sales, all of our strategies, the forced reduction, we'll end this year at a 15% fund balance. So we talked about, we start, we met and we tried to come up with additional $44 million worth of strategies, and the reason why we came up with this is because we wanted to land at 15%. So we have a central office restructure of $10 million, .5 elementary assistant principals of half a million, supplementary programs of a half a million, maybe a little bit more than that, special education contracts and financial monitoring, $7 million, centralized special education placement, $2 million, and then you have your forced reduction of $24 million. And then, again, you see, we want to be clear that this includes no additional state funding from the legislature. So this is how we came up with the $44 million that we talked about on the previous slide. This slide here is a slide that a lot of people like to see because you can clearly see what happened. So if we go to FY2425, which is our current fiscal year, we know that we were projecting to be under our 20% fund balance. 2526, we're still going to be under our 20% fund balance, right? And then what we've projected is in 2627, and that's where the, it turns red. So we have to start making sure that we're doing the things that we need to do now so that we don't get ourselves in a position where that, where we can't pay our bills and pay our employees timely. So current reduction strategies, we have a lot of strategies. We want to be clear that we're not just saying, okay, well, we did good work, let's stop. So some current reduction strategies we have, and you've seen these, reviewing teaching, learning, and leading, and technology contracts, the average daily attendance incentive, software review, a teacher attendance incentive pilot program, reviewing community partnership contracts, and then we still have a few things that were on this list previously that are pending, technology staffing and non-staffing review, the budget pre-reduction is still pending, summer campus building use, and then sped and police vacancies. So what we did when we met with the sped department, we know that we're trying to reduce the reliance on contractors, so we worked with Chief Hossack, and she got a plan where we could increase the number of staff, but we increased the number of staff, but we also know that we're not going to hire them immediately. So we took those and we put those in a holding place, and we also did that with Chief Snee. We know that Chief Snee is not able to hire everything now, so we took those specific positions and put them in vacancies. Oh, one more, okay, one more slide. So then the next slide is community engagements. We just want to make sure that we're very clear about how we're going out, how we're making sure we interact with the budget ad hoc committee, our campus staff, our community, so that we're keeping everyone in the loop about what's going on with our, with our budget and for our current year budget, as well as next year's budget. And then I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Jacob Reach to do the 88, 89th Texas Legislative Slide.
So, thank you. So, uh, thank you, uh, Superintendent Stigrom, Board of Trustees. I will start with a friendly disclaimer, and that's that what I share right now could be outdated by the time I am done giving the update. But I wanted to share the information as we know right now. The Senate is scheduled to discuss House Bill Two, um, a substituted version of that bill, and a even newly substituted version of that bill since what was in the committee. They are scheduled to do that tonight. Uh, they are on the floor right now, but they have not started discussion on this bill. But what we know about the bill right now is that it would provide eight point five billion dollars into public education. That includes a fifty-five dollar increase to the basic allotment. It would also tie the basic allotment to the growth of property values instead of using the golden penny yield. Um, that is, that is new. Um, that would provide some automatic increase moving forward to the basic allotment. Uh, they also have set aside eight hundred and fifty million for special education. Uh, something new in that includes a, uh, funding of a one thousand dollar reimbursement for student evaluations. They have four point two billion for teacher pay increases in, um, new since the committee substitute. They have five hundred million for dedicated, non-administrative campus staff pay raises as well in there. And we're still waiting to see the exact rules, how those work out. Um, but for the teachers, it would work out to three and four year, um, based off of the last thing, which we saw, uh, two thousand five hundred dollar, uh, raise, um, or I, I apologize, it's actually a retention allotment, and five-year plus a five thousand dollar retention raise. Uh, they've also put aside one point three billion for a brand-new allotment, uh, which I have referred to as a fixed cost allotment, but then I also saw last night that, uh, a official document from a Senate office called it the allotment for basic cost, or ABC. This would fund fixed costs like insurance, premiums, TRS costs, utilities for a district. So we have not yet seen the final numbers, but based off of how much is budgeted and how it is written, because it would be a per-student cost, not a weighted student cost. So we get a, an exact amount for every kid, does not matter what their ADA is for the year. Uh, it would appear that it would probably be about a hundred and twenty dollars per student. So that would be on top of the fifty-five through the BA. So this provides similar, but a little bit different flexibility, um, to how we can utilize basic allotment, but we'll need to see final language on that. They also have four hundred and thirty million dollars for school safety. They've made changes to the teacher incentive allotment, including adding a acknowledged designation, which would increase eligibility for TIA. They have a hundred and thirty-five million for teacher preparation programs, which would include new grants for districts for, uh, things like grow-your-own programs. It would include some certification fee waivers. It would also provide, um, some reimbursement for districts that do the retire, rehire, and have to pay that cost with TRS. Um, TEA would reimburse some of that cost. It would also create, uh, mentorship stipends that we believe would be through a grant through TEA as well. They also have six hundred and seventy-seven million for early learning programs. Uh, this includes, uh, increased literacy support at pre-K through two. One thing I want to highlight for this is that the language would also add teachers to the list of groups who qualify for pre, pre, free, pre-K in public schools. So very excited about that addition. Um, why we need more to review, uh, this current bill that was just released, and need to wait to see if there are any additional amendments or changes on the floor today or through a potential conference committee, um, although it appears, based off of some, uh, official correspondence released from the Speaker and Lieutenant Governor, that they at least believe that there is agreement on what's going to be in this bill. Um, so the current version could potentially provide about nineteen million for Austin ISD to put towards compensation increases, and about thirteen point five million that would include both some discretionary and some new required expenditures. So I would not be able to say how much of that, uh, really could go towards a deficit or towards other priorities. We still need to see this language and work that out, but kind of a rough estimate of about thirteen point five right now. So that's a summary on HB three, HB, I'm sorry, HB two.
The final slide shows our next steps. On May twen-, which is today, May twenty-second, we did the recommend, we're doing the recommended budget, um, presented. June twelfth, the proposed budget will be presented, June twenty-sixth, um, budget adoption. And then, we always want to highlight in July twenty-fifth, we get the final TCAD numbers, certified values. So, um, Dr. Reach and I are here to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Trustees. And we have about thirty-five minutes for questions, and I welcome the first person who has something to ask. Trustee Singh.
Um, thank you all so much, really appreciate the clarity of this and the commitment to, um, have a fifteen percent fund balance. My understanding is we're going to be voting on that, on an actual policy change next month, correct? Okay. Um, I did have a question about the forced, um, what do you call it, the forced cuts?
Force reduction.
Uh, force reductions, yes. How exactly does that work, and how do, what do we have in place to ensure that cuts are made with the idea that they're going to cause the least harm to students and, and, you know, the student outcomes work that we've all been working on?
Yeah, so I'll speak to that. Um, it's, it's not something that's often used. Uh, effectively what it is, is taking the dollar amount that you need to, um, solve for, in this case, over twenty million, uh, and you distribute those reductions across every division within Austin ISD. And so when you look at the sheer number of our budget, you know, it's going to represent about a two percent overall reduction. Uh, you know, what we would use to determine, you know, whether, uh, there's an adverse impact or disproportionate adverse impact to historically underserved student groups, it's really going to be a function out of the superintendent's office. You know, leveraging the tools and resource, tools that have been developed and kind of the work that we've done, uh, in previous budgets, the LRP, um, I want to be really, really clear, there are thousands of lines of budgets, uh, thousands of budget lines within our budget. And so I can't sit here and tell our board, you know, that this line item within this, you know, code in this department is going to be reduced by X amount. Um, really, the work here is to get as far as you can and then spend the time to be thoughtful, um, have it come out of the superintendent's office, and then, um, kind of distribute that reduction across, uh, all the divisions. It will not be uniform, uniformly distributed, meaning that not every division's going to see a two percent reduction, some may see a four percent, some may see hardly, maybe none at all. Uh, it really has to be thoughtful. Um, and so it's, it's kind of like the last thing that you would do. Uh, so it's really going to come down to the, the process that the superintendent's office goes through with the CFO, um, to get it done, relying on what we've experienced in the past, and I think that we're, we're well-versed. Um, you're not going to see a rubric necessarily in the way that you would with a traditional process, um, because of just how many different lines, um, are going to be addressed, and also by super small amounts. There might be, you know, um, a non-staffing line item in a division that might say miscellaneous, um, equipment greater than five thousand, right? I mean, those are the sorts of things we're talking about now. So I don't know if that was helpful, but I just wanted to describe to our community and to our board, like, what that looks like. And it's really a tool that's not often used. Uh, it, it's really reserved for the superintendent to work with the CFO on, uh, but that's what it would look like.
I appreciate that. And then, um, when we vote next month, what level of granularity would we expect to see? Not only for, um, for the forced reductions, it sounds like there we might not see a whole lot, but for the other categories of, um, cuts, like the specific programs and, and that type of thing?
Yeah, um, so, uh, for programs, certainly we'll, we'll have that, um, at least the recommendation. In there, you'll see the, um, central office, um, restructure. Uh, that will not be, uh, in a level of granularity that, um, um, you, you're just not going to see that level of granularity, because there's work to be done after the vote actually occurs. Uh, we are, we are essentially restructuring ourselves, um, in an effort to reduce costs, but also acknowledge that, you know, over the last many, many years, um, central administration has grown and enrollment has declined. Uh, we have been approaching this very strategically by making adjustments, uh, division by division as people have retired or as, um, kind of job descriptions have collapsed, but we don't have, um, the, the ability to extend that time as long as I would like to. It has to all occur in a relatively short period of time. Um, so I, I would say that you will see granularity where we can provide it. Um, some of them, uh, won't be there because of just where we are in the process.
I appreciate that. So I know that, I guess this would be a request is, um, to make it, to at least have, um, you know, as much as we can with what we've, you know, with the cuts that are happening and, and all that. But also, in the past, we've had campus-level budgets. I think that would be really helpful to have, um, especially so that we can, if it's in the same format that it's been in years past, it would be really helpful, so we could look side to side. Um, I think it's going to be, um, really helpful for us to, at least for me, to feel really comfortable about, um, you know, to feel more comfortable with the numbers, is just to see the backup as well. And, um, and then how do we ensure that these, um, forced reductions are actually going to happen? Like, you know what I mean? It's like, how do we, like?
We reduce their, I mean, we're going to reduce their budgets.
Like, and that just happens?
Well, you, so, so the, so one of the things that, um, is not known to most trustees is that in years past, before we went through the difficult work of turning over our ERP system, we actually had, um, a, a system that allowed you to run negative budgets. Like, you could actually, um, issue an invoice or, um, pay something when you had a negative, when you didn't have money in the budget. Like, that happened, that happened for years. Uh, it wasn't until, um, Chief Rodriguez, um, working with our CFO at the time, and Brandy, when they turned over the ERP system, now you actually have a control. Uh, so you're not able to spend money you don't have. That was not the case two years ago. You could spend money you didn't have. Uh, so what will happen is we will go through, line item by line item, we will make the adjustments, we'll code it in, and then that money is no longer available to be spent. So that's how it's going to happen. Um, and so, uh, one of the things that we can do is provide a report to the board, kind of where those ultimately occur within the organization when we're there. But to be, just to be really clear, there's, you're going to see a lot of kind of micro-adjustments. I mean, honestly, because there are so many codes out there that are just kind of innocuous or, you know, kind of general supplies or, you know, and I, I can't tell you how many, you know, reams of paper we're not going to buy. What I'm going to tell you is that this five thousand dollar allocation's been reduced to forty-two hundred, right? So that, that's what it's going to look like.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Was that, is that helpful, like, maybe to share that report at that time?
Yeah, that's super helpful. And then the last question I have is, um, what are other, you know, in the past, when you've brought us budget presentations, you've shown us, like, you know, comparisons to other similar school districts, you know, they've, they're also having to make school closures, they've also run deficit budgets. Do we have a sense of other comparable, um, school districts of our size are also reducing their fund balance?
Um, comparable size, it's one of the things that, that I know this board's asked for, not only, well, I know you're asking for it now, but I know in previous presentations that, um, the previous version of the administration had provided, getting fund balance, um, information in the budgeting process is quite hard, right? Because the financials aren't set. So go, we have to make calls, we have to rely on relationships, uh, and then there's also kind of the concern of sharing information that is kind of given to us through relationship and not through a document. Um, so, uh, what we can do is kind of tell you, um, the sense of where we are. We know that smaller, uh, school districts tend to have, um, much lower fund balances by a percent of, and we've seen that even in our kind of neighboring school districts, where school districts are actually borrowing money right, you know, for payroll right now. For comparable school districts, and there aren't many that are comparable, and I would say between fifty-five and, you know, eighty-five, ninety thousand students would be what I would say is comparable, uh, we don't have a good sense for how many are above or below twenty percent. What we typically look at is how many days of, of cash they have on hand. Uh, and so, um, we can provide that. I, I wanted to be really honest, like, it's not like we can go to a data set and just pull everybody and say, this is what we're seeing. Um, but Katrina, anything you want to add to that as far as? We, we, we know that going below fifteen percent is something that no one wants to do. No school district's really going to do it, but we know that there are lots of big school districts passing deficit budgets. They're just burning down the accumulated fund balance that they have.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Trustees. Additional questions?
Just real quick before next session, or in the board docs for next session with the proposed budget, I, I would really like to see how the sped staffing reduction, or the, not, not filling the sped positions that I'm seeing here, and then the changes to centralized placement and the contracting, um, how we're going to maintain fidelity on the service delivery, specifically with the staffing ratios that are required, considering the call that we had about, um, concerns about staffing.
Yes.
When you say positions for staffing, are you referring to the seven million contract that, that bundled?
I, I understand the, I, I assume I understand the, the, that part, but, and current reduction strategies includes sped vacancies, and so I'm asking, how are we maintaining our fidelity on service delivery when we have unfilled positions as part of the cost savings? And that also, we have centralized placement and other, um, contract savings that we're looking for, which would seem like it would contradict from leaving vacancies. So I just want to know what, how we're guaranteeing that the fidelity of services is going to remain high while we're doing cost savings in sped.
Yeah, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I can speak to that. So we have a weekly meeting set with the Dr. Lee and her team, where we're going to start going over, it, it all needs to be mapped out, but looking at what is the total amount of assessments we have, what are the inflows, what are the outflows, how are we hiring? And if we're increasing the hiring, then are we reducing our reliance on contracts? So it should be in that weekly meeting, and at any point where her or Chief Snee say, we're ready, we need additional staff, then we will reduce the number. What we're trying to do is make sure that we hold on to those vacancies as long as possible, so we can get credit for it, but if they need those vacancies, we will move forward with, um, giving, giving it to them. And they both are aware of that.
Okay, thank you. I, I would just like further detail on it before.
Yes, yes.
Chief Hossack, I think you meant?
Uh, do you want for, for the detail now?
Not, not now, in a board update would be fine. Or, I mean, uh, board docs.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to talk about, like, how it's happened in the past. You know, um, the allocation of staff, how we've been responsive to the sped, to the needs within special education division, um, and then we allocate, um, FTEs, and then the department goes through and hires, uh, but what's allocated versus what's hired is not always met. And so as we close out the fiscal year, we want to pull those vacancies back. Doesn't mean that we're not going to allocate them, but, so, we can talk about that in more detail and provide update via board update.
They are allocated, but they're on hold. And it is, it's police for Chief Snee.
Thank you. Additional questions?
Just a, a comment. I know we've recently got a couple of questions, uh, not many, but a couple regarding Proposition A, and kind of, you know, the tax rate election that we had approved in November, and kind of what those allocations look like. There were a lot of FTEs, a lot of positions, um, a lot of things included in that, including compensation. Uh, so we're very excited that we were able to pass that. Um, and so one of the things that we're going to do is provide a little more clarity and determine kind of where to post that information, because there were content interventionists that were associated with that, there were some mental health support, um, dollars allocated. Uh, so we have heard that. I don't necessarily know precisely how we're going to post that, because typically you wouldn't hold a tax rate election, um, kind of budget outside of your larger budget, but I do recognize that's something we need to provide clarity on. So we may do a button on our website or something to just, to point people to it, to show kind of what that looks like in this specific budget.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, and, and I do have a follow-up question to that. Specifically, the question was, one of the things that was listed was campus supports, including mental health supports. And the question was, you know, is that in, will that be provided using some of those funds or not in this upcoming budget? Because I believe it wasn't, it, it went to content interventionists last year, and can you help, like, help us understand that?
Yeah, Trustee, pause. Well, we have set aside, uh, five hundred thousand dollars that would be dedicated to help support some of our mental health work. And, uh, currently, our Shack is working with Dr. Lewis and some other team members on a RFP that could also look at how we could bring in some support for mental health. It may not be that all of that flows through the RFP, or it may be that that brings us to some other type of work, but we're working with our Shack to see what that would look like. Uh, but we do have that five hundred thousand dollars dedicated, and, uh, she never does this, but just because I think she likes me, Mr. Montgomery, agreed to let us roll over that five hundred thousand dollars to next year. So we're not asking, you know, our Dr. Lewis or anyone to be like, oh, and you have to spend this in a month. Uh, we will roll it over to the next fiscal year.
Okay, thank you for that, I appreciate that. Um, I have another question. Um, in the budget, where are our investments in, you know, when we were making this budget? Initially, we didn't realize we had the turnaround plans coming, um, we now know that we have additional We now know that we have additional campuses to support looking ahead that don't need turnaround plans, but that do need the extra supports. Where is that investment shown in our budget? Did we just have that money laying around and choose not to spend it on campuses in need? And then, how does that impact our overall offsets and the other cuts that we're having to make? Kind of what's the big relationship of that?
Yes, thank you for asking. So, there was an additional of $10 million allotted for the school improvement. And so, that's what's in the, it's in the operating expenditures number. We have talked about kind of putting, calling that out. It was not money that was just laying around. So, what that $10 million directly does is increases the amount of the deficit. So, that's another reason why we're going to have to make, make more reductions.
So, we're going to have to make cuts to offset that?
Yes.
So, just, yeah, President Boswell, I think you bring up a really good point. This year has been really difficult. There have been lots of items that we believe need to be reflected in our budget that are actuals. And, and so, this is like a really big effort for us to make sure that what is in the budget is what we spend, and there's extreme clarity around what those dollars are. And it's also really important that when something changes, like an investment for our turnaround work, that we immediately include that in our budget. And so, I had a difficult conversation earlier today with central office staff, and we talked about, you know, why now, not three months ago or four months ago. And what I tell staff is, we have always been endeavoring to become more efficient, but sometimes when these costs come up and you know that we're going to invest in our schools, I have to immediately then find reductions. And so, I can tell you that some of the things that we're doing right now that I'm working through as we speak would not have necessarily been on the table if we didn't have that offsetting $10 million expense. And so, again, every time something shows up, we have to move things that we're going to be further out, further in. So, everything's in here, it's reflected, and to your point, maybe some of those things that came up that are nuanced, that are worth calling out, we should. But yes, this does include the budgets for the restarts as well as support for the improvement work for the other schools that were in that graphic, both central and campus support.
With the goal to get ahead of it.
Oh, yes.
As we've hoped to in the past.
That's exactly right. We are operating as though 23, 24 accountability is realized, and we certainly know that there are, it hasn't been released formally, but we know what it is, and we need to operate so that we're not flat-footed when it does become released, and we're asked to develop these plans in a relatively short period of time. We have to be very thoughtful and forward-thinking at this moment.
Thank you. Also, want to clarify, we should know, absent a special session or two or three, what the legislature has invested in public education before we finalize our budget.
Yes.
If anything, if it's, if it's zero or more than zero, which we very much hope it's more than zero.
Yes, Trustee Boswell, one of the things that we have been keeping to, and we will until it is signed by the governor, or very close to being signed, is making sure that it's $0. In 2023, we went out on a limb here to invest in staff, which is the right thing to do, but those dollars never came to fruition, and honestly, we're still kind of hurting from it. And so, this time around, we wanted to put it in there, show that it was $0, do the difficult work. And here's the thing, no matter what happens with the bill, given the total dollars allocated as we see them now, we're still going to have to go through consolidations. We are using, you know, assets like land to get closer to budget. Those dollars will be unavailable to us on a reoccurring basis, which is why we have to reduce our annual expenses.
And fair to say that no matter what we see in the legislation that's been in any of the bills that we've been looking at, that we also don't come anywhere near closing a budget deficit that we're having to make deep and painful cuts.
That is correct. It will help us not have our fund balance be as low as it is as we close out 25, 26 fiscal year, though.
Okay. And then, another question, our fund balance, the goal with the cuts, with the efficiencies, with the consolidations that we are discussing, is to restore our fund balance, restore our fiscal health, and, and really continue to invest in our, in our classrooms?
Yeah, so, so, absolutely. One of the things that we've shared with the board, and we absolutely believe in this, we need to have vibrant, well-resourced schools. And right now, we're simply very, very thin. And we've had lots of conversations with principals, and they're working so hard. And we're at the point now where the things that, that really matter are being pulled out, and that just can't continue. It just can't. And so, we want to get to a place where we can invest in our schools, not have every school contribute to reduce the overall cost. And so, that's where we want to get. We have to get to a healthy fund balance. We have to make sure that our schools are well-resourced, and I think we can do that if we do the difficult work. And I want to be really, really clear, if we don't do it, it will be done to us. It will be done to us. And so, I think we have the board, we have the administration, we love this organization, and we love our staff and love our students, and we're going to do it in a thoughtful way. And that's just who we are. We're going to do it that way.
Thank you. And I want to thank you, Trustee Singh, for making sure that the fund balance policy comes. It's a big, it was a big conversation about what our fund balance should be. I think that graph that shows our cash flow and, you know, and our, what's in the bank is a really, that has really helped me have a really clear understanding of why that fund balance is there. And then, I think the unexpected costs. We had less Shar's reimbursement than we expected. We had COVID a couple of years ago. I mean, we need to lean on that more often than we would like. We had, you know, storm damage, but we're still waiting for FEMA money for, you know, lots of things. And so, I understand we're in a really difficult place where that makes sense for short-term, and I appreciate being transparent, not just ignoring a policy we have, but really adjusting our policy to meet the moment and looking ahead to making sure that we're still keeping that healthy balance where we don't have to borrow and where we have a little cushion. So, you know, if you get a flat tire, you need to be able to get a new tire. You need to, yeah. Yeah. So, thank you for that. And then, I just want to say, I know the central office restructure is a big thing. I know we're to a point where we're cuts mean people. I know we heard from our calls today how incredibly disruptive and painful it is to lose people for whatever reason. We heard from our students what it means to lose people. We heard from our staff what it means to lose a job they love and, and work that they're proud of to go anywhere else. And it's a disruption of relationships. It's a disruption of the really important work we do with students every day, and I just never want to forget when we're talking about this, that we're talking about people we value, and we're talking about people who value us and, and the students, and how really hard and painful this is, and really just call on all of us to do it as thoughtfully and humanely and, and, you know, in alignment with our values as we can. So, it's a hard place to be in, and, yeah. So, do we have any, we have some time. Do we have any other questions from anybody? All right. Thank you so much. And we'll get a different budget. This is evolving, so when we, in June 12th, we'll see different.
Yes.
It will be further evolved. Okay, thank you both so much. Okay, we are now moving to our consent agenda. Are there any consent agenda items that anyone would like to pull for a separate vote? All right. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes. So, Trustee Willie Chu, are you making a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Excellent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right, having a motion by Trustee Willie Chu and a second by Trustee Quintana to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes by eight trustees, all those on the dais. Now, we will move to items for separate vote. That's on page 11 of our script. Trustee Willie Chu, do we have a motion to approve item 12.1?
Yes, I move to approve item 12.1, approval of a resolution authorizing the issuance of Austin Independent School District Maintenance Tax Note Series 2025 in the approximate amount of $45,200,000, making provision for the payment thereof by the annual levy of the district's maintenance and operations ad verum taxes, providing the terms and conditions of said notes and resolving other matters incident relating to their issuance, payment, security, sale, and delivery, authorizing the execution of a paying agent, registrar agreement, and a purchase and investment letter, and providing an effective date.
All right. Is there a second? And acknowledging that I skipped a page and skipped an item that we'll go backwards to. So, is there a second on item 12.1?
I'll second that.
All right. Trustees, any discussion on item 12.1? All right, having a motion by Trustee Willie Chu, a second by Trustee Quintana to approve item 12.1. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And the motion passes eight to zero with all those on the dais. And we will go backwards to item 11.1. Vice President Willie Chu, do we have a motion to approve item 11.1?
I move to approve item 11.1 in our local agreement with the University of Texas at Austin for the 2025 UT Prep Summer STEM Program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion? All right, having a motion by Trustee Willie Chu, a second by Trustee Quintana to approve item 11.1. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Any opposed? Any abstaining? We, motion passes with seven in favor, zero opposed, and two abstaining. Thank you. Oh, six, sorry, six. Yes, I was doing math, not counting people. Thank you. Six in favor, zero opposed, and two abstaining. Thank you. All right. We will now recess our open meeting at 8:24 PM and move to executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.076, 551.0821, and 551.071. And when we're finished with executive session, we'll briefly return to the open session to formally adjourn the meeting. The adjournment will be recorded and be included in all replays of tonight's meeting. Thank you for joining us, and have a good evening. Okay, we will now reconvene the open meeting at 11:37 PM. And Vice President Willie Chu, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yes, I move to adjourn the meeting.
The meeting is adjourned at 11:37 PM.